We're going to skip ahead to Senate Bill 548. We have people that have traveled here. I want to make sure we get done with that today. Away, we may end up bumping you to a different day. Apologize for that. With that, I'm going to open a public hearing on Senate Bill 548. And I'm not sure if there's a first panel, but if you want to come forward if there's a first panel. And then I'm going to hand this over to Vice Chair Chotson. If you see one of the senators show up, call them up. Kaylee, please introduce yourself with a record and go ahead and get started.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Chotson and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Kaylee McGuire, and I'm here testifying on behalf of Senator Janine Solman, who represents Senate District 15, which includes areas of Hillsborough, Forest Grove, Cornelius, and the Rock Creek area in Western Washington County. I come to you today to share her support for Senate Bill 548, a bill that raises the legal age of marriage in Oregon to 18. Currently in Oregon, a child who is 17 years old cannot vote, thankfully cannot and should not access, have access to buy a pack of cigarettes. But a 17-year-old is allowed to go to the chapel and get married. An article in The Oregonian, published just at the beginning of session, estimates that one Oregonian under the age of 18 gets married roughly every other day, on average. Of those married, and predominantly young girls, are more likely to experience poverty, domestic violence, high-risk adolescent pregnancies, mental health and substance abuse disorders, and often have limited opportunities for educational or career advancement. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services also found links between forced child marriages and human trafficking. A study showed that 83% of underage marriages were girls married to men roughly four years their elder. For those who attempt to leave the marriage, they often face barriers such as a struggle to protect themselves, to leave home, to access shelter, to file protective orders, which leaves them trapped and at risk. The United Nations Child Funds defines marriage before the ages of 18 as a fundamental violation of human rights. The United Nations Sustainable Development Goals calls for global action to end child marriage by 2030. Thank you to the passionate, dedicated, and determined advocates from Unchained at Last for their work on this policy. Thank you for those that are going to share their heartfelt story of trauma and why this has needed change. Colleagues, Senate Bill 548 is a bipartisan bicameral solution. With 46 sponsors being over half the legislature, this bill is to help protect the children of Oregon. I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee. Whoever would like to go next, go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Freddie Reese. I am the founder and executive director of Unchained at Last that you just heard about. Thank you for the shout out. I am here as a survivor. I'm a forced marriage survivor, so this is very personal for me. I'm also here as an advocate. At Unchained at Last, we are pushing, we not only do direct services, helping people escape forced and child marriages, but also are pushing for legislation to essentially put ourselves out of business. And I'm here as an expert. My research and writing on forced and child marriage have been published extensively. I'm happy to answer any questions when I'm done. So, under the current marriage age laws, one parent, without even notifying, let alone getting consent from the other parent, can enter a 17-year-old into marriage with nothing more than a signature on a form. There is no input required from the teen. There is also no recourse for a teen who does not want to marry. And it's important to note, when someone is forced to marry, their own parent almost always plays a crucial role in facilitating it. And what we have seen again and again, and other service providers have seen too, is girls showing up at the clerk's office sobbing and begging for help. There's nothing the girl, the clerk, or anyone else can do to stop that marriage once the parent signs the form. Now, the current law also, as written, creates a dangerous and horrifying workaround for statutory rape laws. Having sex with a 17-year-old is a Class C misdemeanor here in Oregon if the perpetrator is three or more years older, not if the perpetrator first marries the teen. What we are doing is giving a get-out-of-jail-free card to child rapists. And you will hear soon about the statistics of how often this is happening in Oregon. But suffice it to say, thousands of cases are happening like this where would-be sexual offenders are being handed a marriage license instead of being prosecuted. There is also a very dangerous aspect of the current law, where once that minor is married, they're automatically, which would happen just because one of their parents decided to sign the form, they're automatically emancipated. And they lose their parent's financial obligation to them. And this is unspeakably dangerous public policy. Usually, we will do not emancipate a teen and take away their parent's crucial financial support without first having the teen go through a whole court process where they have to prove that they are self-sufficient. We're bypassing all of that when we emancipate teens just because one of their parents signed the form. This is dangerous for many reasons, starting with, in most cases, what we're doing to these teens is forcing them to become financially dependent on their spouse because we're taking away their parent's financial support. And we know that financial dependence is a risk factor for domestic violence, and one of the main reasons that domestic violence survivors state in an abusive relationship is financial dependence. But even more than that, we also have created a powerful incentive for a parent to force their own child to marry, just so that they can emancipate them and get out of a child support obligation. Remember, only one parent has to sign the form. And we have seen this happen again and again, where parents sign the form without even telling the other parent, just so that they can stop paying child support. In one case, in Idaho that we were involved in, a woman found out her estranged husband had paid someone money to marry their teenage daughter just so he could emancipate her and get out of their child custody battle, which was preventing him from moving out of state. She fought it all the way up to the Idaho Supreme Court, and she lost. The Supreme Court said there was nothing that this mother, the custodial parent, could do to undo that marriage. And then finally, let's talk about how the current marriage age laws also create a workaround for human trafficking laws. And this is because of a loophole in federal law. The federal law doesn't specify a minimum age for spousal or fiancee visas. Instead, it defers to state law, the relevant state where the couple will reside. And in Oregon, we have said married at 17 is perfectly legal. So what that means is that, right now, girls in Oregon can legally be trafficked for their citizenship, forced to marry adult men overseas. The men get a visa and a path to citizenship. And men in Oregon, right now, can go online and find a child bride, a 17-year-old from any country around the world, legally import her to Oregon under the guise of marriage. And the U.S. Senate Homeland Security Committee issued a report recently showing thousands of teens are being trafficked in this way under the guise of marriage, almost all of them girls married to adult men. The way to fix that, federal law needs to change, but that's going to take a long time. The way other states have addressed this is make the marriage age 18 no exceptions, and that way, those marriages can no longer be approved at the federal level. We're talking about legislation. When we make the marriage age 18 no exceptions, it's simple, it's common sense, it costs nothing, it harms no one, it ends a human rights abuse, and it ends the suffering of mostly girls in this state. And I urge you, please, to pass it.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Reese. Senator, good to see you. Do you have a committee to get back to? Are you okay holding off until? Okay, sounds good. Great, then we'll continue with this panel. I'll do questions at the end of the panel.
Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, my name is Becca Powell, and I'm the Director of Advocacy and Outreach for Unchained at Last. I want to talk about how this isn't just the law that is the problem. Child marriage is inherently dangerous. So we're not trying to find some better way to enter minors into marriage. Really, the only solution is to make it 18 no exceptions. The one reason why it's inherently dangerous is it creates this really horrific legal trap. It has nothing to do with maturity. It's entirely to do with the minor's legal capacity. Because we don't wake up on our 18th birthday with some newfound wisdom or ability to make good decisions. What we do wake up with is all of the rights of adulthood we didn't have even the day before. And that's so crucial, especially for somebody who's being forced to marry. Because before they turn 18, if they're facing an unwanted wedding, that minor can't even open the door to escape from their parent's home. They can be labeled as a runaway, taken into police custody, and then either sent back home, placed in a shelter, or subjected to a court hearing to determine their fate. But even if they were somehow magically able to open the door and get away, there's really nowhere for them to go. Domestic violence shelters across the U.S. routinely turn away unaccompanied minors, and youth shelters are not a solution. In Oregon, the only path by which a minor can enter a youth shelter is if they're taken into temporary custody by law enforcement. If this was an adult who is facing a forced marriage, they could at least hire an attorney to help them figure out their complex legal needs. A minor can't easily retain an attorney because most contracts with minors are voidable. And they also can't independently bring illegal action, and that creates additional obstacles for them. And even though they're automatically emancipated upon marriage, as you heard, they do get some limited rights of adulthood. These rights unfortunately arrive too late to prevent a forced marriage. They would first have to undergo the trauma of a forced marriage, which, in our experience as direct service providers, can typically mean such horrors as being pulled out of school, raped on their wedding night, a complete loss of sexual and reproductive rights. And we can't undo that trauma just by stamping emancipated across a girl's forehead. But also, these rights are only limited. In our experience, domestic violence shelters would turn away even emancipated minors. And in fact, because minors just lack the legal rights they need to enter into a contract, the U.N. Office of the High Commissioner on Human Rights considers all child marriage to be forced marriage. And unfortunately, when girls...
Could you speak a little more slowly? Because what you were saying is very important, and I want us to absorb it.
Of course, sorry about that. What I was saying was, because of these limited rights that minors have, the U.N. Office of the High Commissioner on Human Rights considers all child marriage to be forced marriage. And that's globally. Every single country has agreed that all child marriage is forced marriage. And unfortunately, when girls have reached out to Unchained at Last and learned of their limited legal options, we've unfortunately seen some turn to self-harm and even suicide attempts. The other reason why child marriage is inherently dangerous is it produces really devastating lifelong repercussions. Studies show that it destroys nearly every aspect of an American girl's life, including her health, her education, her economic opportunities, her physical safety. She's more likely to experience intimate partner violence, both physical and sexual, and be forced to endure pregnancy, childbirth, and parenthood, all without her consent. And as you heard from Freddie, for that reason, our own U.S. State Department calls marriage before 18 a "human rights abuse." And also, just one more important thing to note is that, once that minor is married, they lose the protection of child protective services. So in the statistically likely scenario that they're going to experience domestic violence, they can't even reach out to CPS to get help. And yeah, as you heard, it's a human rights abuse. So really, really appreciate your time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Powell.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to testify on this very important legislation. I'm Michelle Hanash. I'm the Director of Policy and Women's Programs at the Aha Foundation. We are a survivor-founded nonprofit working to end harmful practices such as female genital mutilation and child marriage. We also receive requests for help from those who are fleeing forced marriage from across the country. And it is because of these horrific situations that we receive these help requests from that we are so adamantly in support of ending all child marriage. And I wish I could say that child marriage was not happening here in Oregon, but unfortunately, the data shows that it's happening at an alarming rate. So, 3,604 minors were entered into marriage just between 2000 and 2021. 83% were girls wed to adult men, an average of 3.9 years older. So although child marriage can be harmful for all children, it is disproportionately harming our girls. And just between 2000 and 2014, at least 1,272, and possibly as many as 1,814 marriages occurred with a spousal age difference that would have been a sex crime outside of marriage. And it's likely that since 2014, which is the last year we have data for, hundreds more have suffered the same abuse. As you heard, this is a global movement. Under the U.N. Sustainable Development Goals 5.3, 193 countries, including the U.S., have pledged to end practices that are hindering gender equality. That includes FGM, and that includes child marriage. So in Oregon, we have already ended FGM. So thank you for taking that step to protect your girls and enact that important legislation. We just now need to take one more step to protect our girls and end child marriage.
Quick interruption. Please. FGM with female genital mutilation.
Genital mutilation, exactly. So, one other important thing to note is that this is also a national movement. As of today, I'm happy to say, 14 U.S. states have ended child marriage. And that was Maine that just enacted legislation today. And as recently as 2024, Washington, our neighbor to the north, also ended child marriage. There is no residency requirement here for marriage, so we don't want to see Oregon end up the child marriage destination hotspot. So for these really important reasons, we urge you to vote yes on this bill as soon as possible and end child marriage.
Thank you. Questions for the... Yes, please.
So what if they went to another state, got married, and they moved back here? What, will Oregon recognize that license, or will we... What will happen?
So...
If we pass this bill, Chair?
Yeah, this bill would not impact a marriage that took place in another state. But I promise you, we're going state by state. In the last few years, we achieved 14 legislative victories. There's a 15th pending. Missouri Legislature passed the same legislation. We're waiting for the governor to sign. We want Oregon to be 16, and then only 34 states to go.
Any other questions for this panel?
My recollection that it was 1999 when we made it illegal to engage in female genital mutilation is, I think it was the 99s.
I think it was the late 90s.
And at the time, I was surprised that there was even any debate about the matter, trying to say, well, we're respecting other cultures and the like. But there was an understanding that, and this sounds to me like we're here too, we need to be reminding ourselves that our culture needs to be sensitive to the needs of our people. And that's what I'm gathering from your testimony here today. And so I guess I'm saying, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you all so much. Senator, I'll have you come up, and then Ms. Turpin, I'll have you come up next.
Vice Chair Chotson, committee colleagues, for your record, State Senator David Brock Smith, Senate District 1, which includes Coos, Curry, and Douglas Counties, Southwest Oregon's Fish Farm and Forestry District. And I believe I can say on behalf of Senator Solman, my other co-chief sponsor on this bill, this is one of the reasons why NCSL is so important, because that is when we were introduced to this horrific problem. That I don't have much more to add, other than, of course, appreciate the bill getting scheduled and for your, being plugged into this critical issue that needs to change, not across, also across the country, but including Oregon. And appreciate the bipartisan bicameral sponsorship of the legislation with Senate Bill 548 to end child marriage in Oregon. And so I will just end there, and thank you. And my colleagues, and look forward to it passing unanimous across the floor, as it almost did in the Senate.
Thank you so much, Senator. Any questions for Senator? All right.
Oh, question.
Please.
So how are we going to reconcile with religion? Because some religions encourage or allow that for their religion. How state law versus religious practice? I don't know.
Well, I think that would be an answer for the individual. I don't, I agree with the testimony from our previous testifiers, and I think it should be the practice of Oregon to not allow, regardless of religion, marriage under 18.
Mr. Chairman, a comment on that. We can impose civil standards as to marriage. There's no restriction on our capability to do that historically, so there should be no problem with this. But I think we have a witness who can say that something.
Yeah, if I may add to that, so again, Freddie Reese from Unchained at Last. First of all, every major religion has supported banning all marriage before 18 no exceptions. As we go across the U.S., we've had interfaith support, every major religion. We don't know of any religion that requires child marriage. But even if there is a religion that we don't know of that does require child marriage, the U.S. Supreme Court has upheld legislation that incidentally forbids an act required by religion, as long as the legislation does not target religious practice. That was the Oregon v. Smith peyote case, where the U.S. Supreme Court has established that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here, Senator.
Thank you.
Ms. Turpin, I'll have you come up, and then, time permitting, we will go to the three people who testified, signed up to testify online.
First, I'd like to thank the committee for allowing me the opportunity to speak and share my story. My name is Amy Turpin. I'm born and raised in Oregon, Salem specifically, so very local. I'm here to put a local face to the situation as someone who endured child marriage. On 4th of July, will be 31 years ago, that I was married to a man much older than me. It was, in the moment, I thought it was something I wanted, and when I realized at the wedding, I didn't even sign the certificate. I was like, whoa, that, I thought I had a part in this, okay. So I felt like I was signed over from my mother to my husband. And then the first thing he did was close my accounts, and our mutual employer got, he had every penny I made after that, too. And then he moved me out of state. So I was isolated on top of it with my new baby. I had his child before the wedding, so I was 16. And that means I was failed, not only by my family, which, of course, my mom and my grandmother had both been either child brides or moms themselves, but my high school, the clinic that diagnosed the pregnancy at 16, the hospital that delivered the child while I was 16, everybody knew. And nobody supported me. It was just, he's a good guy. He stayed with you. And that was enough to tell me that nobody cared. I think a lot now about if this bill had existed then, what my life might be like today. To say Freddie is correct is an understatement. Her research is impeccable, but I lived what she said, and it does affect every part of your life. I'm not well, and it has everything to do with nervous system dysregulation that is right on par with what our soldiers endure. Physical ailments that get ignored under the scope of, oh, well, you had a hard life. They dismiss you in care. There's never-ending complications as a result of enduring something like this, that it's incredibly hard for me to express, even though I have lots of words. So I just thank you guys for taking this seriously and doing something to change for kids in the future, so they don't endure what I did.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Members, I have to step out, but I would encourage, I mean, depending on, I know I said we're going to end at 4:00. If people do not have obligations between now and 4:30, I would continue this committee hearing, but I want to leave it with Vice Chair Chotson to chair the remaining of the committee, and see you later tomorrow.
Do you want me just to finish the public hearing?
You can do as much of the group.
Thank you so much. Obviously, if anyone needs to leave, by all means, just let me know. But any questions for Ms. Turpin?
Just thank you.
Thank you for your courage in sharing all that.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn now to remote testimony, and we're going to go to Ms. Law, followed by Ms. Truba, apologies if I'm mispronouncing that, followed by Ms. Christians. Ms. Law?
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes. Please go ahead and introduce yourself for the record, and then go ahead and jump right in.
Perfect. My name is Anastasia Law. I'm a lawyer and the Program Officer for North America at Equality Now, which is an international human rights organization established in 1992, working to protect and promote the rights of all women and girls around the world. For over 30 years, Equality Now has partnered with international and civil society organizations to strengthen laws and policies to advance gender equality and combat violence against women and girls, including sexual violence, sexual exploitation, and harmful practices like child marriage. Child marriage is recognized internationally as a violation of human rights, a form of violence against women and girls, and a harmful cultural practice that threatens the lives, well-being, and future of girls and adolescents around the world. International law, including the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, which the United States has ratified, requires the free and full consent of both parties to marriage. Since minors lack the capacity to provide such free and full consent, child marriage is incompatible with the United States' obligations under international law. In this respect, in October 2023, the Human Rights Committee, the committee that oversees compliance with the ICPR Treaty, urged the United States to further adopt measures at all levels to prohibit marriage under the age of 18 years. Eliminating legal loopholes that allow child marriage is also essential to achieving the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Target 5.3 of the SDGs specifically calls for the elimination of harmful practices, including child marriage. By passing SB 548, the state of Oregon has the opportunity to position itself as a leader in the United States in aligning local laws with human rights standards. This law would bring Oregon in step with the, as of today, 14 other states that have already enacted such legislation. The only foolproof way to protect children from the negative effects of child marriage is to prohibit all marriages under the age of 18 without exception. Such laws recognize that a child under 18 is too young to make the decision of whether to marry, and also lacks the other legal rights given to an adult. They protect children from harmful decisions often imposed by family members, and at the same time, preserve a child's autonomy to decide on their own if, when, and whom to marry after they reach the age of 18. Oregon law currently permits child marriage with parental consent, but this does not adequately protect children. In many cases, consent laws facilitate coercion, with families pressuring minors to marry for cultural or economic reasons. This is especially likely where the law is set up in cities in Oregon, requiring the written consent of just parents or guardians with no additional safeguards. Equality Now strongly supports the passage of SB 548 to eliminate the parental consent exception to the minimum age of marriage in Oregon, bringing it in line with global standards and better protecting the rights of all women and girls in the state. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Truba?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair and the counsel. I just want to say a few words. When I first heard about Senate Bill 548, I wondered how only one year could make a difference in the lives of young girls. Then I heard and read stories of women who were married as children, mostly aged 16 to 17. These marriages were performed under consent of the women, but highly coerced by their families and/or their religious organizations. Most of the women were forced to have sex unwillingly, and some were more physically abused in their marriages. One woman I personally spoke with was moved far away from her family, and her body was used for profited, unimaginable ways. I now understand in that one year, a person's legal rights change dramatically. At 18, a person can enter a contract, seek legal advice independently, ask for help at shelters, et cetera, rights that a 16- or 17-year-old are restricted from. As a member of Zonta, where we seek a world of equality for women and girls, a world free of violence, with equal opportunity for education, and the end of child marriage, I ask that we end child marriage in Oregon, that we say no to marriage before the age of 18 or legal adulthood, and an age that we realize, and an age that, when we realize we made a mistake, we have social and legal rights to seek the change. And better yet, at 18, women are more able to say no to marriage before they have found their way in the world. I'm grateful for the work that Unchained at Last has done, and I thank you for taking my testimony.
Thank you so much. And could we have you introduce yourself for the record, please? Just state your name.
Carol Truba.
Thank you so much, Ms. Truba. And then last, from our remote testimony, we'll have Ms. Christians.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hello, my name is Helen Christians, and I'm representing the Humanists of Greater Portland. I'm a member of that group who does support Senate Bill 548 to end child marriage. When I was a girl, when I was a young girl in the 50s, the early 60s, if there were two things that teenage boy, a boy and girl, could do if the girl became pregnant, the girl could go to a home for unwed mothers and relinquish their child for adoption, or the boy and girl could get married and keep the baby. Of course, there were exceptions, but they were rare. And as a youth, I did attend three child marriages, three of pregnant teenagers. Of those kids, five were under 18, all three girls. And of the three couples, two of the boys were under 18 and attended my high school. And one of the boys was older, he was 19. But one of the reasons I feel so strongly in support of this bill is I witnessed what those kids went through. They struggled to complete high school. None of the girls ever got any advanced training or went to college. None of the girls ever got any advanced training or went to college. They, they all, especially the girls, worked low-wage jobs, struggled, struggled, struggled. They struggled. And all three of the couples experienced infidelity and poverty. There was physical abuse, there was verbal abuse, and of the three couples, two were All of the, during those years, I continue to know of them. I come from a small town near Buffalo, New York, and keep in touch with my family. And all of those, those now well into adulthood, have experienced significant health issues. And one woman, who was my dear friend, died of alcoholism at age 39. I know that these forced marriages due to pregnancy have become rarer now, but they still do occur. And I'm asking that you all, please, support Senate Bill 548 and end the possibility of underage children marrying in Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Colleagues, any questions for our remote panel? Okay. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on SB 548.